Now called an order.
Number Wyatt?
Here.
Number Owen?
Here.
Number Pleister?
Here.
Number Destroyed?
Here.
Number Warren? Number Thien? Number Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's start out with uh, financing.
Okay, so there, and Jim, I'll try to just let you kind of talk about it.
Yeah.
I looked at a number of them today and not that many.
Yeah.
I listened as quick as I could. Um, but just um, odds and ends that we're shoring up and um, received some money and then expect another.
Yep, so uh, we're shoring up uh, the budget here. We got some uh, we got land bank grant, grant and surround. So we're uh, doing some demo of the uh, potential new fire station sites. We got a Eagles donation for the fishing rodeo. So we're adding that to the budget, but we're decreasing the city's portion of that. Police donation, we're adding into the budget because it was eighty-five dollars. Then the Stark County sewer rate went up, so we probably should pass that on to residents. For our. So, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? They were very ordinary. Motion to move item three A to the council agenda.
All favor.
Alright.
Moving on, ordinance rules.
Yeah, I think Liam, you were gonna talk about this one.
Uh, yeah, so we're looking to uh, put forward an ordinance to basically render the property maintenance review board defunct. Uh, so getting rid of the chapter that established it, uh, and then amending all of the provisions that mention the property maintenance review board uh, for the ZBOA. So, the property maintenance review board went into effect in twenty twenty-one, and since then has only met four times uh, to consider appeals for property maintenance violations. Uh, so, out of those uh, four times, only one of which has actually had any real action put forward. Uh, most of the time it's just, uh, one, somebody showed up and didn't mean to, they just wanted to let things go. Um, so really, we have no true need for the board. Uh, so in the interest of operational efficiency, the city is proposing that we roll the responsibility of hearing property maintenance code appeals into the ZBOA, uh, which more closely aligns to with how it's outlined in the charter anyways. Um, so that's why we're kind of looking at getting rid of the board. Uh, we have spoken with the existing members of the board uh, about opportunities to join other boards, several of which expressed interest. I'm still working with them to kind of get things lined up for opportunities for them to apply for other city boards uh, as things come up. And then just for a little extra clarification, we have met no times in twenty twenty-five, not once. Uh, we're already in April. Uh, so as the clerk of that board, I would say that I agree with the assessment that we should just go ahead and roll it into the ZBOA.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to move item four A to the council agenda.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Personality.
So, happy to say that we're going to. Our. Service units, right?
Service.
And managing groups, street sewer, water, and the general maintenance, right? Very successful. Uh, negotiations aren't easy. Unions are, the members have their wants and their needs, and the city has their ability to meet those. And somewhere in the middle, or close there too, came to an agreement. A lot of things were brought up on the table. I'm gonna let Ms. Farina cover all those because it covers wages, covers benefits, covers CDL license, that type of thing.
Alright, well, as they said, yeah, it's not easy. It's round and round. And uh, what was unique in this negotiation was that uh, for the first time, we've really had the younger staff is now outnumbering the older veterans. So there was a tight period where you had a lot of tenured service and then you just, you know, had some new ones, and now that has changed. So, you see a dynamic in what they're requesting. Older uh, tend to focus on wages, they want to get that, you know, final average salary up there. Younger want a little more flexibility and benefits, they want some work uh, work-life balance. Um, so we had really good conversations. I mean, ultimately, when we look at our service union, what are we looking from, for them? The value they provide this community is service. This is your street, this is your sewer, this is parks, this is lands and building. This is water distribution, when there's water main breaks, we need them. So um, we talked a lot of things and it was really meeting in the middle ground. So uh, I guess I'll start just with wages. Uh, we ended up with a three, three and a half, three and a half, so it's a three-year contract. Um, we're asking, you know, I mean, we need to get this passed because their contract ends April thirtieth, their new contract begins May first. Uh, so that's the three, three and a half, three and a half is their wage increase. Um, we talked about the years of service, service um, you have, so they have steps uh, when they come in and they progress. So from coming in entry level to the most senior service worker five was a span of twenty years, and they felt that was really long to come in and twenty years to get to the top. Um, they wanted to shorten that to ten, so like, how negotiation works is you meet somewhere in the middle, so it's fifteen. So from when they come in to fifteen years till they're at the top. Um, there's also some requirements in that, like you have to have a CDL class A to be at that service worker five level. Uh, also, uh, we, we eliminated a general labor. We had a category A hiring and entry level, and that rate of pay was really low. And we know we're competing with fast food, you know, places that have such a high rate. So we're, now we started, we have service worker one to service worker five, instead of this general labor category, which was really, uh, we didn't require too much the previous service for that. Um, we also um, increased some things, like I said, speaking along the lines of um, work-life balance. We gave them a little more in their comp time bucket, so comp time is something you can earn instead of working overtime and having an overtime paycheck. You get overtime in, in the form of time, so instead of one and a half times your pay, they'll get one and a half time off for hour you work, you get an hour and a half. And a lot of the um, you know, young employees with families really appreciated that. Uh, so we also reduced uh, the time to get a CDL. We require you to have a CDL now um, to work in the service department. Uh, we need that for them to be able to um, you know, uh, trailer the equipment and, and drive certain vehicles. Um, we gave them a, if we hire, we like to hire having a CDL, but sometimes we don't get that uh, luxury. You might not have very many people or very many qualified people. Uh, so we were giving them up to two years to get it, we're gonna reduce that down to one year. And we're also gonna request that we see some sort of mandatory sign up for a CDL class within six months. And that was a request um, on both sides, really. We had, we brought people in and just kind of drug out that process to a point, and we did have to separate them. And that's a lot of time and training and outfitting and so. There were some other requests back and forth that, you know, that they wanted, that they weren't given, and uh, there were some things that, you know, we worked on together. Um, one thing that also we feel is really important is um, longevity, is something that longevity pay was something the city had. Um, it's a fixed amount uh, each year for, depending on how many years of service you've worked. That was cut uh, back, you know, in tough times when Hoover had left and uh, the city was trying to not reduce staff as much. Um, and there are people that were in it, were grandfathered into it, so any new people, I believe past two thousand and eleven, right, um, have not received it. Longevity, you have to be with the city five years, so it kind of goes along the same vesting schedule of opers, they're not fully vested overs to five years. So after five years of city service too, because we do hire from the outsides. If you came ten years somewhere else and we can't, it kind of gave you that credit somewhere else, you don't get that credit for longevity. You would still need your five years with North Canton, and then it's seventy-five dollars a year is what they receive. So I think in this contract, we only had about four or five that we knew, right, four, four or five eligibles. You have people that are already in it, and you have people that are not eligible. Kind of our stats in that union, like I said, because so many new young ones, we have forty-eight percent of that union is under five years of service. And we have over seventy, it's like seventy-five percent uh, under fifteen years. So you only have twenty-five percent of that union that's over fifteen years, that's where I said you see that difference.
Hope for respective uh, year one, the cost is two thousand hundred fifty dollars, three thousand one hundred fifty dollars for year one, thirty-five hundred for year two, five thousand for year three.
So it's not a huge amount monetarily, but what you get with that is it's a retention bonus and an attraction, both, both sides for labor management. So uh, retention, people will, you know, they feel good for saying, and every year they get a little more. Um, it, and as far as attraction, most cities have it, like we look at other cities' contracts and they do have uh, retain, have a longevity benefit. And some people, that could be a consideration of leaving. They leave somewhere and they lose their longevity, they may not want to come to a city that doesn't have it, so. Um, another uh, item that was a little different that we added in is um, we, we need our service workers to uh, come when we need them. So there's a water main break on the weekend and we need them to come in, um, so we have um, and unlike, like, other unions where there's no minimum staffing in a street department. So if somebody doesn't come in that day, we don't call someone in and incur overtime to, they're literally down someone. So if they are out sick during the week, but then if they're needing to be called in on the weekend to work, um, we are now gonna allow the time off, if they were off during the week, it's about sick time, to be counted towards their hours worked, so they can get overtime compensation for the time they're called in on the weekends.
Wait, say that again, sorry?
So the, the way overtime, under FLSA, the fairer standard says you have to pay overtime anytime hours worked over forty. We were not counting if, if they were sick in that forty hours, so the example they gave is something happens, you're sick, come in there Monday, you want to go to work, you're off sick Monday. But then you come in the rest of the week, Saturday, if you were needed, you called out for a water main break, you were not paid overtime because you only had.
Got you.
You know, thirty-two hours regular, and, and the eight was sick, and now we will allow that counted so that they will come in. And that was a real hard one, you know, we went back and forth, and but we're talking to the superintendents of that department, they were like, you know, we have to have them come in, we need them to come in. And they will say no, because they'll say, look, you know, I've got a young family, two days off, I'm not, I'll say no to that, so um, because they're not gonna get overtime. So now we feel we're getting overtime compensation, they're more, they feel a little more compensated to come in, um, to, you know, to give up that time when we come in. That's it, the only other change was scaling back um, cert, when service credit from another city, we, we do use that for their placement, on whether they come in as a service worker one, two, three, four. Um, they don't want them to receive vacation at that, they want them to start at two weeks of vacation. Uh, so that's something that um, we were allowing laterals to come in and whatever level of vacation they were at in previous, um, that they said they would like them to start in two weeks. And so, we're gonna see how that works out as far as.
I don't, I, I think that's not.
Oh, you got three years to figure it out.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's rare.
We tried to say that.
Yeah.
Somebody may not want to.
You tried to tell them. It's hard to attract people, you know, I mean, especially with the younger generation, they value that vacation time. And if they've been working somewhere for ten years, you didn't, you already paid your service, so. We will see.
Work-life balance is extremely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's uh, the lunch hour thing.
Yeah, that was.
That was great.
Take, take a thirty-minute lunch and then leave thirty minutes early, or take their full hour, maybe not everybody take the same a lot of time. Depending on what management feels they need for staffing based on the value of work they do, so that brings back that work-life balance.
The other contract was very limited. It was a one-hour mid-shift lunch break, one hour, eleven to twelve, didn't really give them flexibility. So yes, so they all really, people see them working on the job, they all stop at the job, they all drive back to the service center, they eat their lunch eleven, twelve, and then they drive back. And some of them say, I don't need the whole hour, like I could stay on the job longer, or something, you know, could I even work through? And that will be like Dave said, under management discretion. Um, it won't happen all the time, it won't happen with everyone, but what they needed for work-life balance, their doctor's appointment or something a little earlier, I'd leave at three-thirty instead of four, that's now gonna be allowed with the contract.
Now, you said the contract is up at the end of this month?
End of this month, yes. April thirtieth, so in two days it's up, and the new contract starts May first.
Hearing about it.
Although we're going back and forth, yeah. It's, it's. It has.
It's hard.
Overthinking this. Is this a good thing to bring out to the public before the election?
It is what it is. It's contract negotiation, you have to have it. I mean, you, you have, it's a union contract, if you go past, then we'll have, you know, retro pays. Um, if we don't agree to it, then we're gonna go to arbitration, and then the whole thing's off the, off the table, it's whatever the arbiter decides. So, I, you know, I was talking with the city of Green, I was calling them because I know that their contract was up for fifteen, and they, they haven't come to agreement, so they're already passed. So they were, you know, um, it's tough, you know, you have uh, their representative schedules, you know, it's our schedule, their schedule, and then their representative's schedule who oversees um, you know, many different unions and is usually not from the area, so.
Well, and Catherine, like you said, it was May one, and we're not doing it for or against the levy, it doesn't matter, they're completely.
It was May one, no matter what.
It's a flagship item.
Forever. Yeah.
It's what it is. Well. As I said, anything we could.
Fair.
Yeah, it's very fair, and I agree with that, but.
I think what's important here is that we met the obligation of coming up with a contract that both parts agree on before this time. Yes, and uh, for the twenty twenty-five budget, we did anticipate an increase.
Yeah.
We knew this stuff, and so there will be, there will be no uh, budget amendment. Mmm, for this, that's just perfect. Well, it was, it was a give and take in a lot of areas, and I know the, the sick leave was very important to them. I think wasn't their initial ask for about five percent increase for a year, for three years? So they realized the importance of that and gave the city an opportunity to say, well, where can we meet, where both can manage this perfectly? I think we achieved that.
Yeah.
That's off to administration, you know, it takes a lot of work.
Three years.
For them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we really appreciate, this union is the labor union, it's everything but water treatment plant, so it's everybody we need to keep this city running. And we want them to be happy and us to be happy, we thought we achieved that.
I'm gonna say Catherine did a good job, it's for your first full, it was your first.
Thanks, Jim. Paid him the same time. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
I'll make a motion to move item five A to the council agenda.
Appreciate.
All favor.
Aye.
Well, moving to these.
Yeah, let's.
Now, these just.
Alright, um, this is an ordinance authorizing a mayor of the city of North Canton that uh, committed to a LPA, a federal local, less project agreement, fine between the city of North Canton and the state of Ohio, on the transit connection, including the West Maple Street resurfacing pos- prospect in the. Anything to add, Liam, on that?
Catherine, anything to say about this project?
Um, you know where this is, right, John?
Yeah.
This is the West Maple Project. From Main to Limb Lane. Um, so uh, it's just um, ODOT accepting ninety percent of the cost, um, and uh, they pay the contractor directly, so it's a good one.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to remove this six eight of the council agenda.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And John, party.
Hi, this is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Stone Hill Street Southwest within the corporate limits of the city.
Uh, yes, I've been working with uh, the property owners here, uh, so we'll be vacating a seventy-five foot portion of uh, unpaved roadway on Stone Hill uh, off of Westfield, uh, between Westfield and Ambler. It is unused roadway that the city has no intention of ever using. Uh, currently, the two property owners have been maintaining it, just kind of mowing it because of the butts to their yard. Uh, so if they mow their yard, and this section's just left unkempt, you know, it's just in general doesn't look great. Uh, so he said, I've been mowing it for fifteen years, I'd be great if you just gave it to me, and we agree. Uh, so we had budgeted for this at the end of last year, uh, to get the surveys done and everything. Um, they've petitioned and signed, uh, it's actually a father and a son, uh, so they're gonna split this evenly between the two of them. Um, it's a pretty clean break, uh, everybody's been very good to work with, very amenable to it, so we're good to go.
Um, we, we make a motion to move this six B contract.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries.
And I make a motion to.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. We'll start in about a few minutes. Written on call to order of the city council meeting of April twenty-eighth, not the fourteenth, PM. The time is seven twenty-two PM. Uh, tonight's open, open hearing will be delivered by Reverend Angel Jackson of St. Jacob's Lutheran Church.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the North Canton, I'm gonna do a little speech, and we appreciate this person, just let us pray. Holy God, I give you thanks for this beautiful day, for gathering us together safely. And I pray for everyone who are leaders of our community, and I ask that you give them your wisdom and your guidance, so that they can make the decisions that best benefit the whole, and that we especially care for those most vulnerable in our midst. We ask that you bless this time and our community and give us your peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Liam, would you please call the roll?
Number Wyatt?
Here.
Number Owen?
Here.
Number Pleister?
Here.
Number Destroyed?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Thien?
Here.
Number Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented the minutes from the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five public hearing and city council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We don't have anyone that signed up for the first public, uh, public seat sitting in the row. And uh, that's your own business. Liam, would you please read the, uh, the title of ordinance thirteen twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Park Avenue Northeast from the south right away of Power Street, and then adjoining portion of Whitworth Street Northeast to the west right away of Taft Avenue Northeast within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, the street now.
There's no changes on anything from the, from the last meeting.
Alright, sorry, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance nineteen twenty-five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment of procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the planning and zoning code from its existing classification to park and institution.
Okay, and as you can see on the map, we've discussed this um, previously, nothing is new. Any comments, questions? I'm going to uh, move to adopt the second reading, nineteen twenty-five, second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-seven twenty-five?
An ordinance approving the continued operation of a designated outdoor refreshment area in the city of North Canton pursuant to section forty-three oh one point eight-two of the Ohio revised code and chapter seven oh five point zero six of the qualified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Okay, as you can see, uh, the DORA on the map there, um, nothing new here, I'd like to continue. Comments, questions?
Uh, this will renew the DORA for a five-year period, uh, so this is our first experience with the renewal. Uh, all we need is the approval of council, and we just can, get to continue operating.
Okay, sounds like one. Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-eight twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Ashland Street Southwest within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay. There's been no changes on this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I make a motion to suspend the council twenty-three to allow for consideration of additional items that were discussed, um, immediately proceeding to the hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Carries. Uh, Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-six twenty-five?
An ordinance finalizing the annexation of one parcel owned by the city of North Canton located on Whipple Avenue Northwest, Wise Avenue Northwest, by establishing the zoning of the parcels as general business B, and establishing the city council voting board as Ward One.
Okay, so as you can see on the map here, um, it's right there. Anything to add? This is.
As we've discussed before, this uh, is the continuation of our previous annexation over in the area, the general business designation is as close to as it was in Jackson Township. Um, so this just kind of aligns with it, and being that it will be a commercial district, assigning it to Ward One will not significantly alter the voting makeup of any board.
No, and we're just looking to send this to have a public hearing, so. I'm gonna make a motion to set a public hearing of uh, ordinance twenty-six twenty-five for Monday, June ninth, at six forty-five.
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carries, and I'll make a motion to postpone uh, further consideration of ordering the minutes twenty-six twenty-five until after the June ninth uh, public hearing.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-nine twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Liam, I'm gonna have you highlight expenses and expenses and.
So um, we previously talked about, um, we got the uh, donation for the fishing rodeo, the Eagles. Um, so we're adding that to the budget and taking part of the city's uh, budgeted funds out of that. We budget to uh, until we know where to get the grants, so. Then we have Rob, Rob, that's the demo funds for the fire station, so the budgeting that. Also showing revenue side as well. Got a police donation of eighty-five dollars, so the revenue side, so we're gonna put on the side as well, and then the Stark County sewer rate increase, so that gets passed on, so we're wanting until we go to the sewers.
Any questions or concerns? A motion to, a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance twenty-nine twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Uh, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council for private periods.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty-nine twenty-five under.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty twenty-five?
An ordinance repealing, ordinance. An ordinance repealing ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-one and chapter one forty-eight property maintenance review board of the qualified ordinances of the city of North Canton in their entirety. And amending various sections of part seventeen property maintenance code of the qualified ordinances of the city of North Canton. For the purposes of dissolving the property maintenance review board.
Yeah, this is the one that we just talked about in the previous committee of the whole meeting. I do like, Liam, I think you did a good job giving us a lot of information. And I like that you already talked to the board members and are trying to connect them with another opportunity. Which is better anyway, if they're not having meetings, they'll they'll get connected with something they can actually do, so.
We wanted to make sure that they knew before we sprung it on them.
Yes.
Mister Davis isn't here tonight, but he was one of the members of the board, so we didn't want to just drop this on him at a committee meeting.
Maybe that's why he's not here.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I appreciate that 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 element. Unless there's any other further questions, I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Liam, would you please read the title of resolution here, twenty twenty-five?
A resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of North Canton and the North Canton service employees as negotiated by the Department of Administration and declaring the same to be an emergency.
So we just discussed this, this is a negotiation for a three-year contract. And it's under emergency as spring is stated, contract ends the end of this month. Place everybody, take your. Any questions? I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of resolution thirty-one twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council for private hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to adopt resolution thirty-one twenty-five under suspension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-two twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement. Via between the city of North Canton and the state of Ohio Department of Transportation. For the West Maple Street resurfacing project and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Have you covered this in the whole meeting?
Sorry, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council for private hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance thirty-two twenty-five under suspension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Stone Hill Street Southwest within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Any other questions or anything? Anything, Shane?
You never know anything. So I'll make a motion to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Nobody, oh, no, Liam, if you would, the pre.
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from officials at the desk. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the premises.
Hey, we have two speakers this evening, the first is Pat Patterson.
Hey, everybody. Pat Patterson, seventeen fifty-four, three power vault. Today I have a beef. Uh-oh. Not with anybody in this. Um. Do some things more. It's really annoying me. You must speak out. First of all, we all know social media can be valuable. Very good. Connecting with family members, connecting with friends, especially those out of town. You can keep up with them a lot quicker than you can. You know, the old-fashioned writing a letter will be seven days, wait seven more days to get another letter. Lord knows what happened. Connecting with those with common interests as well. Good way to make announcements too, such as community walks. And other business events and promotions in North Canton. However, we know it could be a tool of detriment. Of course, we know potential hate and for narrative, people that are pro-ative have absolutely no good. A hotbed for misinformation. What's bothering me, of course, you know, and Abraham Lincoln always says, if it's on the internet, it's got to be true. So. Especially politically. If one for an issue or a candidate for the wrong reasons. Foolfully misleading. And especially when talking about issues. There's a lot of. Garbage going around. A lot of misinformation. Saying that, yeah, we're going to pass this and then we're going to be voting again for these these reproperty. Bullfords. I I believe the seven of you, I was here, I witnessed it. The seven of you by roll call vote. Said, we will not seek renewal of those three lives. If four passes. I believe all seven. I really do. I'm sorry for those that don't. But the fact remains, if four passes, those three will lapse and destroy. It won't be enough revenue generated, I believe, because I live in a city. That in nineteen ninety-six. We approved the pipe from one and a half percent to two percent. And guess how many property caps we have on? Or five, or police, how many do you think we have? Zero. I think the only thing citywide is the lot. We have all the money. That's really the only thing. The unfortunate thing is obviously not being a resident. You know, I'm an employee in the city, I participate in city activities, I even, I have one even that I do myself. But I'm a firm. Firm believer in it. I'm a full supporter of it, and I believe it's the best option we have. Comments, questions, grilling? Fire records?
Thank you, I appreciate this. I've seen some of the misinformation.
Yeah.
Very frustrating.
It's the same three or four people. All the time, it's the same thing, well, it's broken records. And it's blaming individuals, blaming, you know, everybody corporately. It's. It's not fair. It's really not fair, and like I said, I just got to. I I went to Matt, Jamie, and a couple of the others, a couple others in our little circle. And I said, you know, I've had enough, I'm going to say something. Doggone it, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Next up, we have Steve Pope. Steve Pope, twenty-nine forty-four Lanster Street, North Canton. I'm also pastor of Trinity Baptist Church at twelve twenty-one twelve eleven, East Maple Street, North Canton. And I'm here also representing the North Canton Ministerial Association, which, as Jason mentioned, is already a part of that. But I'm just here to remind you that Ronald Gray, the president, the new president, signed into law that the first Thursday of May would be declared a national day of prayer. And North Canton does participate in recognizing that, and it will be coming up this Thursday. There is going to be a a ceremony or observance on the square at Vincent Park. Mayor Wilder's taking part in that, also some other folks, I'm sure the administration are going to be involved in that. But I'm just inviting all of you to participate, that is at noon on Thursday. Actually, at Vincent Park, if it's going to be bad weather, we'll be inside the community building, Y and C A, they have offered to allow us to use that. But again, just on behalf of the Ministerial Association, we are going to be there praying for this community. Praying for first responders, praying for the government, praying for our school systems, praying for our churches, our families. And pretty much anything that contributes to the benefit of this community, so inviting all of you to be there for that and to invite other folks to participate also in that on Thursday at noon.
Thank you.
Let's go to the department.
Yes, thank you very much, President Stroey. I have a number of things I want to chat about tonight. And first of all, again, yes, thank, thank you Pastor Coke and Pastor Jackson for your participation tonight, reminding us of the national day of prayer. On the square of Vincent Park. We will pray for warm, nice weather, I know, no rain. But rain or shine, we're going to have it, and we have an alternate location if it is raining that day. And it is a nice turnout, so thank you very much. May third, at Walsh University. The city of North Canton is going to be presented the distinguished service award. By Walsh University. This is their sixty-fifth year in operation, they started in nineteen sixty. And I've had the honor to receive that, receive that on behalf of the city administration. And again, if any of you are available, there are two ceremonies, one at eight thirty and one at two forty-five, I think, in the afternoon. And we do have special seating for our dignitaries from the, from the city. But this is really quite a surprise that Walsh University came forward, but they wanted to recognize the partnership, the collaboration, cooperation, and communication we've been able to achieve these last several years, so. Very honored to represent the city with that. On a bit of useful information, we had a. Team of police officers participate in the Mercy Health Glass City Marathon. Glass, G L A S S, okay, sorry. And that was, there's a photo up there, okay, we had Officer Vance, Officer Lowe, Officer Spencer, Zovara, and Sergeant Buzzard. And we needed a fifth person, so Matthew Buzzard and Sergeant Buzzard got his dad up. But they did pretty good, their team name was Speed Trap. Go favorite. And they completed that marathon as a team in four hours, twenty minutes, and nine seconds.
Oh, wow.
And they finished ninth place in the family relay category with only twenty-five teams in there, but that was still a top ten finish, so.
That's cool.
Thank you very much for officers to travel that far. I talked with Sergeant Buzzard today, I said, you think you might try to find something a little closer? And they said, yes, they would like to do that, because they are up early, they're at the University of Toledo at the start and finish there, so. Congratulations to them for representing our city. Again, a big thank you to our North Canton library team for coordinating the twenty twenty-five Earth Day. North Canton celebration that we held at on Saturday, the twenty-sixth, in beautiful sunny downtown North Canton. It was about forty-five degrees and, of course, windy and cool, and a little bit of dampness, but thanks again for these four. Partners for our community, Eastside Gold Solutions of Ohio. The shredding was by You Shred It, you know, they come out with a team of about fifteen people. And they had some young people there that were only nine, ten, one, I think, was thirteen, some of their kids come out, and they were out there all day in that cold. You know, carrying boxes and putting it in their bins and things like that. And and they did a great job, and they do it with a smile, and they love it. Know your roots, again, they were there with their plants and vegetables and, of course, a lot of organic vegetables that they like to sell. And we, our good partner, Goodwill, had two collection trailers there, so it was well, well received. The only complaint I had was, believe it or not, people were rude sometimes in the shredding area. Because we had so many cars coming in, and we still had that managed as best as we could. And those people that were, you know, from You Shred It, they're working their panties off to get things, and we still had a few motorists that were just flat-out belligerent. That, why did it take so long? And yet, here we're doing something good for the community. You know, kindness is is understated. And if people just have a bit of patience, we'll get you in and on your way, so. But again, thanks for the North Canton Public Library for for coordinating that. I had an opportunity once again to participate in the first pitch of the North Canton Little League. This was their seventy-seventh season. And Mayor Wilder threw a strike, I just want you to know that, didn't bounce over, went right over the plate. And, pardon me. No, I wasn't three feet from the home plate, okay? I was about sixty feet, okay? Thank you, John, I really know how to make a guy happy, dude. But Gary Giammarco and Tom Meter and the whole team there from the North Canton Little League baseball board, they do a great job. Again, it was cold, windy, forty-five degrees. I did throw a strike, I'll just, again, I'll tell you that, but not to be outdone. Okay, there you go, I have witnesses right here. Jeff, for, not to be outdone, Representative Scott Olsslager, our state representative, he also threw a pitch and threw a strike too. So between Scott and I, we represented government, I think, fairly, wait a minute, Jeff, what was that, did he get it over, or was it a little outside? Okay, all right, I had my back to him, I was signing the baseball for the.
I think we just need to get videos next time you do that.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. You know, for what it's worth, about three hundred and forty-four youth are involved, and they have thirty coaches. And here we are in the seventy-seventh year, and, you know, Dr. Giammarco. What an asset to this community for baseball, it's a love for him. And to see all the families out there, I mean, there are several hundred people there for that, that cool day to get their kids started. Again, just, you know, Walsh is on the move, a couple more things for them. They're a gold level designation as a military-friendly school for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And this started under Dr. Collins's tutelage. And by recruiting Joshua Ruiz, who's a former U.S. Marine and also a Walsh graduate. He has done an outstanding job in helping veterans come in for financial aid and getting an education and furthering their careers. Again, kudos for them and getting them jobs and things like that. Their Cavathon, they raised over thirty-four thousand dollars here at the conclusion of their one event there this spring. And again, that was with the cooperation of Akron Children's Hospital and the Children's Miracle Network. You know, money right here in our community and helping, supporting those agencies. And something else new, a lot of people don't know that they have quite a nursing curriculum. And they have been able to acquire some two high fidelity simulators that their students can, whether it's, you know, working on a chest or legs or heart or something like that. Those have been added, and and that's kind of a unique thing, so, you know, our hometown university is not, is not the item. Again, if you saw any hydrants being flushed today, Monday, the twenty-eighth, was our northeast section. And then on Wednesday, the thirtieth, we'll be doing the southeast section, or, yeah, southeast section for blowing out our hydrants. As Mr. Patterson mentioned about issue four, we have been receiving phone calls at the administration. And been trying to walk people through the information on the ballot, okay? And and that's about as far as, you know, we we go, we're just trying to give them our take on the issues that we feel that will benefit our community when it comes to issue four. I had a person call me today from up on the northwest side of town, she wasn't sure where she was going to vote. And so without trying to give her some misinformation, which I thought I did at the very beginning, but I researched her address and found here. For, just for wards in the first and Ward One. Again, if you're in one A or one C, you're voting at Faith Family Church, eighty-two hundred Freedom Avenue Northwest. Double check with Mister, our councilman McGlycer. And believe it or not, you're voting in Jackson Township, but you're voting for North Canton schools and our issues, yes. So I did call that person back and left the message that I missed, and I thought it was going to be right here, like in the old days, okay? At right here at the civic center, but all I'm going to say is for our public and Robert, is to have people make sure they check with their Board of Elections, our Stark County Board of Elections. And it's very easy, I went in and double-checked even for myself, if you go to their page, just Google, you know, Stark County Board of Elections and then find my poll. It's very easy, it'll pop right up, and you can just. It's very easy, it'll pop right up, and you can just put in your name and your date of birth, and it'll pop right up where you're going to vote at. And for me, obviously, I'm voting at the Church of Christ of North Canton. But I double checked also in that area for that northeast side of town, and I checked like Loop and Los Angeles. And yes, those popped up that you're be voting at Faith Family. So, anybody that's watching tonight, just make sure, one, on their webpage or their information page, you can go to the home, you can check, am I registered to vote? And, you know, where do I vote? And if you're voting absentee, you can actually track your vote. So, just some information for our visitors, our voters, I should say, as we head into the primary on May sixth. And. Okay, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that people know where you're going to vote, because it's very important for them to exercise civic responsibility, thank you.
Catherine?
Along the lines of that, and appreciate you, Pat, talking about how much misinformation is out there online. They wait till Monday morning to call for the, you know, clarification on that, so our phones were really busy today, so that must explain it. And we have been doing so much Q and A, you know, we did the road show, we called it, we went around, tried to get to the groups. Our staff has been doing an amazing job, and especially since our front desk staff, one of our employees, I thought I would mention, Terry. She is one of our main phone representatives, her mother passed away. So I always wanted to say, her name was Deborah Van Sutch, she's a local community person, and she did pass away last week. So we've been down a staff member, and we don't have a lot of people, you know, we only have a couple admin assistants. So our whole team has stepped up for everybody to back up with Terry's absence, you know, being out with her bereavement leave. But, you know, we're doing all we can with that on the phone calls. Also, we're getting a lot of calls on NotPec. So, you know, some people build some confusion, just people got the letter, so y'all got the letter, right, y'all got this in the mail, right? And so it just, it was, it's just, what is, some people, what is NotPec? No matter that we've had these meetings and Ben did a nice presentation, and we put some things on our site, some people just, this is what triggers, now what is this? So we all have some community forums, you might have heard already, but, you know, and we posted it too. So I just want to mention it's gonna be May first, six P M., and that's gonna be here at Civic Center. And then we're gonna do another one after that, and that's a more informational Q and A table on Monday, May fifth, ten to two at City Hall. And then we will still post, we can't even think of the questions, sometimes that people ask, so if some good ones come up, we will just collect them all. You know, we'll try to put it out on our social media, so people understand that. Speaking of Walsh, Mayor mentioned Walsh, and, you know, like you said, the commencement ceremony is a Saturday. And then also Kent State and North Canton are gonna be in an international town gown association, it's in June. We're gonna present together, our presentation was just accepted. It's gonna be Teresa Box and myself, but she's gonna be out of town, and we may have Ben and Liam do it. I mean, because we have some great alumni, you know, from Walsh, and that's what we're gonna talk about, is that great partnership that we have with Walsh, and so we'll be presenting there. That's all I think I really have then, just, oh, I just want to update operational stuff, obviously, you guys see all the great construction going on on the North Main with you and Dairy Queen, did you have something more on that?
You go first.
I was gonna give them an update on the well, well eleven, especially, John, this is your ward, right, the Philip Hill area. Thursday, there's gonna be a generator running out there, and we're gonna get some letters out to the neighbors who will hear it. They are at the point, the well's coming along, developing wonderfully, it was pumped all day last week, and it's holding around seven hundred gallons per minute, which is what they want. They have to do a final seventy-two hour test, which they have to make sure that it can pump at a rate of one and a half times what they want. In order to do that, that is gonna be running about twenty-four hours a day for three days. So maybe it'll be a humming, nice white noise that will lull them to sleep, or not. But we wanted to let them know ahead of time, so they're not calling saying, what is this loud noise I'm hearing?
Maybe we'll hope for some cool weather, windows will be closed, and.
Yeah, you never know. Yes, which we're good.
Matthew and Lloyd, getting phone calls about sheets coming down. So let's get it cleared, okay? They are just going to rebuild, they're doing a rebuild up above ground and below ground. And this is in their plan of operations, as you recall, they were here, what, six or seven months ago before planning Glenn Snow, that they were going to do a rebuild. So that's what's going on, they're not going away. They, from what I understand, the plan is for them to be done by the end of August and open. So they're just doing a complete redesign above ground and below ground. So I had some inquiries this last week about what's happening at the sheets. And some people didn't realize that is in the city limits of North Canton, that corner there, and that little bit of section there on Pittsburgh, right, almost right up to Freedom? Not Freedom. Not Freedom, what's?
It's independence.
Democracy, something like that.
What's ironic is, just sheets is in North Canton, not the car wash.
That's correct. Some cities not in this one.
Yes, this changing of the sheets, the remodeling, I've seen that at a number of other sheets locations in northeast Ohio, so it is very much. Well, I don't know if I'd call it normal amongst a lot of other businesses, it's normal for them.
If you travel to the bar, it's gonna be like that sheets.
There you go.
Nice. Yeah, they tear it down like fifteen years or something.
Jeff?
Well, I would be remiss as a Walsh grad if I didn't take a moment to congratulate all of the graduates of the class of twenty twenty-five. And I wanted to extend a thank you and a best of luck in all their future endeavors to our graduating interns. So we have Izzy Romell, who was our spring twenty twenty-four. She will be graduating towards the top of her class with the Tower Recipient Award. I spoke about that last meeting. We also had Jacob O'Connor, he was our fall/winter twenty twenty-four. And Grace Santi, who just finished up this spring. So just a thank you and a best of luck to them, I'm sure that they will do great, they are some of the brightest young minds I've ever met, being a young mind myself. They, sometimes they put me to shame and be like, you know, questioning me in a good way, and helping me grow, not only as a manager, but also as a, you know, just person and doing my job better. I also wanted to take a moment to share that I will be speaking on behalf of the city at an Open Gov webinar tomorrow. So they actually reached out to me citing our success with rental registration and our pretty prolific usage of Open Gov for many things across the city. You know, we've expanded to over forty record types, doing things that even they don't realize that Open Gov is capable of as the people who build the program. We kind of try to work it into every possible avenue that we can, just to get the best value for the money that we pay for the program and for our community. So I will be speaking on specifically the rental registration program, the successes of it. The webinar is more specifically related to short-term rentals, which we don't have as much experience with. But working the long-term rental workflow into other communities' abilities to regulate short-term rentals. So this is an opportunity for us to share what we're doing, highlight our successes, our pain points, to help other cities do better and optimize and basically be a resource and a guiding force in revolutionizing how governments operate.
Look at that, years ago, we would have attended a seminar, and now we're giving it, right?
That's great.
Dan is on vacation, if you're listening, shame on you.
Let's go to you, Councilmember Shane.
Perfect, I want to thank those who spoke this evening, and also want to thank somebody who spoke last week, Mrs. Richards, I believe it was. And, or Richardson, excuse me, lives on Seventh Street. And because of her speech last week, I want to thank the administration. So I followed up with her comments about her drainage, and I think we had a couple of days of rain in there. We started with cleaning out the drainage basin and realizing it was woefully inadequate, and, yeah, very, very shallow. And wouldn't you know it, there is equipment on Seventh Street right now. So I just want to thank the administration for how quickly they were able to act and rectify this problem that we identified that needed to be repaired. But I go back to Mrs. Richardson, we wouldn't have known it, that there's an issue had she not reached out or attended a meeting and shared her concern. So thank you, thank you to the administration, thank you to her for bringing it up. Also want to thank the administration for something that we're working on over there on Woodgrove, so thank you very, very much, and I believe that's all I have this evening.
Also, no report.
Well, we know a reason. Couple things, I'd like to thank Catherine and the administration, I've been driving throughout the city, curbs and gutters, they clean them out real well. Maybe you want to share, Dominic will find you. But they're really looking a lot better. I talked to our administration, they've done a great job. I'm looking forward to the West Maple Project and the Main Street down around my area, that's gonna be, it's a much needed project, and it's gonna be good. I did have one question, Catherine, what are they doing, as you know, up at Children's Hospital? Are they capping a well or doing something with it? It looks like it's a parking lot, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not aware, you saw up on the hill, you saw something there? I don't know, I don't know that. Like be just something privately.
When I went up there to ask. So I wanted to know. But I appreciate it very much for the city, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm asking Catherine right now, I mean, my Catherine Tina. Just want to say thank you to administration for all your important negotiations, that's a hard role, and we used to rely on our legal counsel to do that. And that was something that our previous administrator kind of brought back in house, and it seems a little more consultatory that way. So, thank you, I just know that it's a lot of back and forth, you know, and that's timely, and takes a lot out of you, so thank you. And thank you to the unions that were represented, we know they do really good work in our city. And Mayor, thank you for speaking on the levy, and, you know, it's everyone's responsibility to find this the truth. And that's made harder and harder, I think, to do, but it's on our website, it's, all the facts are there, and you and your team have done a really great job of getting out there. There's so many people that really are responding to the truth. And especially for our population that is retired, it's a real benefit, I mean, you don't pay in tax. So to have better services, this is a win-win. So that's exciting, you know, for our community, what we can do and support our fire EMS in our streets. And that was one of the departments that you were rooting for as far as the negotiations, so, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Christina?
Just a reminder that Dogwood Pool Passes are on sale, they've been on sale since April seventh, and somehow we're almost into May, so that's crazy. But those are on sale, and then the North Canton Farmers Market is back starting next Wednesday. So it'll be every Wednesday from four to seven P M., and I just encourage people to go out and shop. The only way we get to have those things is if people support the vendors who are there, so I'm really hoping that we have a nice showing on next Wednesday.
Hey, can I just add?
Yeah.
I got my pool pass.
Yeah.
It is like, gotta be the best value in summer fun in the area, so.
Absolutely, yep.
Well, I'm a Y member, and I live in the city, I think, something like that, I mean, it's, my gosh, it's definitely worth it.
That's on the list as well. I don't know that I can cover anything that hasn't been covered, there's a lot going on in our community, so. Thank you, Pat, and Steve for speaking, that's all I've got, so final call for the business. The meeting's calendar, May fifth will be Committee of the Whole, May twelfth will be a regular city council meeting, May tenth will be Committee of the Whole, and twenty-sixth.
You mean May nineteenth?
Or May nineteenth, yeah, nineteenth, sorry. And May twenty-sixth is a holiday, so a meeting there.
Any questions to adjourn?
Second.